Good evening. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled town and council meeting in order with the roll call.
Cheryl.
Tom.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Tanya.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
You all please stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in front of us tonight, we have a couple different meeting minutes. We have the executive meeting from March the 7th. And then we have the council meeting minutes from March the 10th. I don't think that date's right. Uh, March the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay, this is March the 10th, it's special meeting, I read it correctly.
It's actually the 7th, special was 10th and regular was 17th.
I read that incorrectly. So, we have all of those. Any corrections or changes we have on this?
I corrected, Cheryl had pointed out, I said center point once, point instead of move on after gas, I did change that. But I didn't find anything else, because I gave it one more look through, maybe I missed something, because I was tired.
Okay, then if there's no further questions, I'd like to entertain motions to accept S present.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Is this for the March 7th or the March?
It's for all of them.
Okay, because I wanted that to be March 7th.
It is, even if you're not here, doesn't mean you can't vote.
Okay.
And that was just the executive, which just basically says you was here, so what the meeting was about.
If you wasn't there, should you switch this?
No, not necessarily, it does not mean, you do not need to be here to approve the meeting minutes. You just want to. Oh, oh, that, that's what you mean, okay. So.
Did I really put him on there?
Okay, I did not see that. I thought, I knew he wasn't here, and I thought we were just talking about do not mean here, so let's scroll that back then. Let's review that, and the March 7th meeting minutes will exclude, the executive meeting minutes will exclude Tom Burnett. And that is the only change I think that we have on all three of these. So, now let's go back to entertaining motions to accept the March 7th executive, the March 10th special meeting minutes, and the March 17th council meeting minutes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Minutes have been passed with one change mentioned. And then we have the bid for the surplus fire truck.
Yes, so this was meant to be a sealed bid, but it was not marked as a bid as instructed, so I have not looked at it, but I did mark the date received, but it was not marked, and that's why it was open and they signed it. So, hopefully that is sufficient. Okay. We have David Briggs has bid $8,867 on the 1992 International 4700. That's our only bid.
Okay, so then we have one bid, and then it is, I've seen ready to be sold then.
That is my understanding.
Okay, so as soon as he pays, then we will be able to transfer the ownership of it to him, and then if you can get him with the fire department to pay up.
Okay.
Good deal.
I will get in touch with him and let him know you.
Let's. Okay. Then we're going to move down to, there's no comments with anyone on the agenda tonight, so we're going to move down to the town.
I emailed earlier today, two items for first reading. We could start with the utility issue. Tyler is in conjunction with the PGS has termed up the approach to encroachment agreements, the encroachment application. So, we have a resolution to memorialize that as the town's formal approach to that. They effectively have this process already. There's a preference to have it memorialized in resolution form. And I said first reading, as a resolution, we can make this the town policy now, so if you want to do this one on one, number 2025-01, you'll see, it's pretty short and sweet, it's got the application form as exhibit A, and then the encroachment agreement as exhibit C. I will tell you that the agreement is one that was drafted in conjunction with our office, so legally, we're certainly okay with that. Encroachment agreement form.
So this will help us when other utilities.
Well, yeah, I mean, it can be, other utilities are requiring, well. There's a lot of different uses, but I mean, we're going to need easements. But I mean, one example where this came up is when we were extending the new transition line. We had to have easements there. Really, anytime we have to move our lines, we don't, aren't enough committed right away, we have to obtain an easement.
So it's anytime that we get one.
But this is really when the, we use this as where, when another utility or property owner wants to encroach on our, onto our line, we're going to have a new approach to that. Basically, the term under which we're willing to allow that encroachment on our existing. And on another note, with the 24 being in place now, and the 714 as well, there's major lines that would be catastrophic to the utility if something happened to it from a utility crossing it. Just to better protect that utility, that 24, or that 14, whatever their crossing, it's better to protect it. We can set guidelines and standards for that encroachment, and we can review it as they, and set standards that they have to meet when encroaching it, and we can review that, and they'll have to pay, so. That's why I was referencing that transition line, I think that would increase the, the new for this, but really, it's all. There's a lot of development that's going to be going on in that area around that line. It would be best to have some sort of encroachment agreement in place to protect that line, utilities crossing.
This is just a standard review, a lot of people use.
Yeah, I think, I think it just helps for the utility to know.
And what you're saying is.
If this is approved, I.
It was written by your office.
The easement itself, or the other. And we've got this form, which kind of gives us the information we need to know about.
Okay, all right, so any questions or concerns? Now I'd like to entertain motions to accept town chancellor ordinance, resolution number 2025-1, a resolution of the town council, of the town chancellor adopting a consent to encroachment application form requirements and procedures, and encroachment agreement.
Hold on.
Second.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
On the side of the council town, the second line we have is ordinance for first reading. 2025-03. We had talked about this quite some time ago, I don't remember how long ago, but this is a common problem throughout, really, the whole country, that I hear a lot in Indiana, where municipalities will train police officers, they'll go get the training, and then immediately go somewhere else where they can sometimes make more money, and, you know, that's, that's, that's fine, that happens, but the problem with the training being so expensive is that some municipalities, especially smaller towns, end up really becoming free funding to train police officers and sheriff officers for other departments. So, this is designed to say, look, we'll hire you, we will train you, but if you're not here for three years, I'm sorry, three years, 36 months, three months, then that, yeah, three, so 36 months, you know, there's going to be financial repercussions to that, that you're going to have to pay back some of the training costs. You'll see that the town is required to pay for tuition and fees, lodging, uniforms, travel expenses, and salaries for the training, but then, those are the kind of things that we can recruit business if they leave before, during that 36.
Okay, Kurt, I have one question on page 2 under F. So, and maybe you can answer this, because it, on number 2, lodging and meals during training, so when they're local, we're not paying for their meals locally, we're only paying for their meals when they're out of town, so does it need to state that something different on that? Josh, this is lodging and meals during training, well, they're in training locally.
Right.
As well, so do we need to change that aspect of it?
Sure, we can have during non-local training.
You know, when they're out of town?
Yeah. And this is a first reading, obviously, so I guess we can talk about if there's any other changes, but once we know all the changes that have been voted amended, then we'll bring it back. And the back's reimbursement, as you'll see, is either $5,000. And again, we'll bring this back to the next meeting, so we.
I mean, if we choose another one at this time, it's not passed, there's still time for change or anything like that, and then we can look at it, they come in, or we can start the process of hiring, if we think it's something we want to implement prior to hiring a new one. So, I'd actually like to entertain motions to accept the town of Chandler ordinance number 2025-03, with the change of changing number 2 under F to lodging and meals during non-legal training. Make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
So, any changes we want, we can, if we see anything else, we can do that prior to the next meeting.
Okay, the only other thing I'll note is, Michael, we probably talked about this better, that the folks are interested in developing the Speedway. I can say Speedway, is Raceway or Speedway the official?
They're referring to Speedway Properties.
Speedway. Will be coming soon to the next meeting, formally talks about the development they want to have, and be brought into the town, had the opportunity to talk with two of them recently, they had some questions, just about town process and procedure and other conversations, and, you know, I've, I've looked at some of their other developments. I'm impressed, but I'm also impressed that they want to come in in a big way, I mean, these are many, many homes, which would be nice for Chandler, both from a tax base, but also, I think that has the, that kind of thing has the potential to help draw interest from commercial folks, and they recognize too, they're putting in this residential, so they have that motivation to do commercial too, because you're going to fit in 150, 200 homes, suddenly, you know that those homes are more attractive if you have a fast food place or groceries, particular groceries. And so, you know, I don't want to steal their thunder, but I think they're interested in other development opportunities, so I have mentioned that to Michael, that I think it would be beneficial to suggest some opportunities for them that we know of that are available. Certainly, by the fire station is one option, but some of what they're interested in doing actually would re, would necessitate even more space for the grocery option, that would be more spaces than is there, I think they're really interested in that. So, you know, again, I confess, I don't know these people personally, but I did do some, I think Michael has as well, some diligence on other stuff they've done. I mean, they're certainly legitimate, their work is, looks nice. You know, particularly where they will be, at Speedway, they have recognized, they'll need some floodwork done, and, you know, our ordinances will require that too, but, but they're interested in the long haul for that. I mentioned this in the email today, but one thing they are interested in, and I will refer you to that, it may come up in conversations when they come again, but they acquired about some assistance with the public infrastructure piece of that, mainly the roadways and utility extensions and caps that go there. That is something that, you know, for larger developments, it's not unusual for people to request that. To the extent you guys are interested, you know, the logical, the common way to approach that is through a tax income and financing district, and what that does, I'm just going to use makeup numbers for discussion, because let's say it's valued at $100,000. You need the development now for $300,000. Well, the tax difference between that 100 and 300,000 first is used to pay for whatever you've agreed, infrastructure-wise, to approve and pay for there, and once that's paid for, then that additional taxes goes to the, right? They had a specific request about that, and that was their specific request to assist with that, and the reason being, if that can happen, they feel like there are some, I, I, I think the, they're going to be a mixture of homes, townhomes, and I think some apartments, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think the quality, I think use word quality, but not the quality, but the, 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 well, somewhat the quantity, but also the aesthetics of it, you know what I mean, the value of the initial can go up. It's all a numbers game for developers, right, and so if they can, they're not having to spend money on roads and streets before, you might have had a $200,000 home, now you have a $350,000 home. And so that's, you know, the, the, the request, and, you know, I mean, in some respect, it's not quote-unquote cost, and tip districts don't quote-unquote cost the town anything, it's not like there's existing funds you're getting that are going away, it's just stuff you might otherwise capture from the development, you're delaying getting it because you're reinvesting it in that development in one way or the other.
And Josh, I think we, we had talked on the phone, and I think I told you we did not have a tip, that's not exactly true. We do have a tip, but we have not had any movement or action on it.
Okay, but it's not in that area though, right?
Uh, no, I think it's, I think it's near where we're building a new firehouse, but.
Oh, well, that's, okay, okay. Interesting.
I don't have, we haven't got any movement on it that I've been able to report, and it looks like for several years, Ron didn't approve any. So, we do have one, we're not currently using it, maybe we should look also in rolling into this in the ways we can maximize that a little bit better for the town in general, but I didn't want to front it up, and I was like, oh.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah, and I, I don't think since I've been here with the town, that we've done that, but it's possible. It's a common, like, I mean, as an example, in Evansville, probably this one a year, or multiple year, as an example, I mean, it's very common, something, for big developers, it's just, it's very, very common, it's also very common for larger scale, I mean, as an example, like, the new Aquatics Center in Evansville, they use that to do one. It has not traditionally been one that's used for residential purposes, it's traditionally been commercial or other, you know, city, county group and stuff, but I don't know how long ago the state legislature changed their approach to it, nowadays allow residential developments to use them. It, it's tough, because it is, again, you're like, well, great, well, this will help our tax base, but yeah, if we're, you build a tip, it suddenly your companies were trapped, but you're keeping the tax investment there until those investments were paid off, then of course it goes away, but, but the other way you look at it is, some people, well, sometimes those, those developments wouldn't happen but for reinvesting it there, or they wouldn't be as nice, those are the two arguments.
And, and so is it, is, is it, is it just like at the town level, or does the tip pull money from Oregon?
No, it's, it's just in the, this is just within the town.
And so instead going into a general fund, go to some emergency?
Just the incremental part, right, so.
That's 200,000.
And I, yeah, just, and I use that for lesser purposes, obviously, these numbers will be substantially bigger, in fact, the amount they're going to invest is, well, 56.5 million, think about that.
So it's basically the difference between what the town would be valued at now.
Right now.
And what they would be after.
Right.
The building is done, with the tax increment different times.
And, and until.
You're not losing anything you don't already have, it's very similar.
You don't lose anything you have currently, right.
It's similar to what we've done with other development, well, let's just call it, it's very similar to that.
The abatements are similar.
Yes, very good concept, the same concept.
The difference with the abatements is, yeah, I mean, I guess, they, it just goes, if in effect, I mean, I hate to use this, it really goes straight into their pocket. I mean, this is nice in the sense in that you have a development agreement that outlines the uses of those funds.
Okay.
You know what I mean, like, you can say it needs to go to public infrastructure, I mean, it can go to more, I mean, and to be frank with you, here's another example, I was, I was involved in this one, I mean, there's some new apartment complexes going on in the old, old national building downtown, that demolished, those apartment complexes going in, I mean, that's. There's some incentives there, especially their grants, right, and they offset the cost of having to do demolition work. So you can go, I, I mean, I, we could hear what the developers say, I think their interest is primarily in public infrastructure, there was some interest to, and some of the site prep, which would involve some of the engineering work, getting it around level, and then, you know, obviously, from there, it's all on them, but they're interested in that help. So, in a sense, the town is paying for it. Out of increased taxes, that's a result of their, I mean, you know, if, if, if they, they didn't cut, they didn't do it, you know, yeah. You would have that anywhere, that's sort of the way, and that's why the legislature allows you guys to do that. And it's, it's really, it's designed as an incentive to. No decisions to make, I just wanted to bring, you know, bring this up, sorry, you know. I think when they come into town, they're going to want to, I, I, I expect that'll be a discussion.
Okay, then we'll move on down to the chief of police.
So we had our testing Saturday. We just make them run in the rain, we actually got them to high school, select a run-up, the top, which was like a long way around here, it seemed like they never going in, but out of the six that tested, five of them passed physical. So basically, I have four, I have four applicants, they wanted a full-time job, and I have one reserved at M U's testing also. So, they all passed the written, and we'll start on interviews, but we'll wait until we get this agreement in place.
And I know that the fire department, everything was the surplus, they've been exceptionally busy. Um, there's a big thing with that. Then we'll move down to the director of public services, Tyler.
So after the further discussion with the engineers and I, until front row, we decided to come up with a change order for the water project. There's a lot of additional utility coordination because of other utilities not putting lines, and whether it's causing us to shift and move around, a lot of utility coordination. And we tried to save them some money with the hot caps and the way they install and tie into the surfaces. We just think that it'd be best to do a change order to cancel out those, to offset it, and just give them one month sum of $1,025,590, and that's just that change order approving that. That way, there's no more change orders coming, it's just basically a change order saying, we'll just give them the entire amount of the project, since there was so, so much utility coordination, and then we try to save them money, and instead of offsetting most of the change orders, without a good best, just a. Yeah, they've been easy to work with, I have, and with all the groups that got out of the, with other utilities, and I then being on site, and, we just kind of want to make it easy for them as well.
So just canceling and then adding.
Yep.
Okay, any thoughts or questions or concerns? On this, this actually moves this from 980 to 850, so the increase of previous change order number one, 36740, we're now at $1,025,590 on this project. So, looking for motions to accept this change order number two. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Cheryl. Tom.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
So I would have, we are going to start flushing here from first, so you guys are aware, that house is about two weeks, so. Edit that, that's got me, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have a lady demonstrator?
I related this to you guys much, because I've just been working on the train that was due on Friday, we have a lot to do. Easter, though, is the Saturday, Easter egg hunt, I guess we should say, and we can start the golden egg hunt today. Some little girl just come in really excited, she's surprised, they've already found it. Easter, I kind of, I kind of need to know if anyone is going to come and help, so please let me know. Okay, good. And right now, we've talked about moving in down to the baseball fields, just depending on how wet they still are this weekend.
Did you get a chance to fill up?
No.
I didn't think so.
So, I'll send out more information on that later in the week, which place we're doing it, but obviously, we're going to be there, so you'll see. 8:30 Saturday morning.
She need help with anything else?
I don't think so, and we just got to get everything over there, but we really can't put stuff out until, you know.
Yeah, I think it starts at 10, so I think 8:30 is the time to tell us to be there, not that the event starts.
Right, right, yes, oh, yeah, I'm clear on that, I just didn't need to help.
Depending on where we're putting it at, we're just going to have to put out some order stuff on Friday, but, if you're able Friday.
Okay.
And I might need help.
I should say this.
So, okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, just, should be attached. Yeah, just that we should be attached.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you very much. Environmental Management, Mike Bell.
Just to follow up to Josh's conversation, the Speedway developers have been talking to us about additional properties, one of the things that parcels that's by the fire station, and in order to sell that, we need two appraisals, which I've ordered, and trying to get the appraisals complete, as we do expect on the twenty-first, our next council meeting for the developers, along with the project manager, Zane Hammond, and Morley Engineering will be here, that's the plan for the next council meeting. And so, again, trying to get those appraisals prepared so that they've asked about that property, wanting to make it all on that property, so we're getting that property ready for sale. Just letting you know, the good news there. Over the past week, we have been doing our best to, well, before the rain started, prepare and to mitigate anything we stormwater ground to prepare for that storm. According to our calculations, we had eight point five inches of rain from Wednesday to Sunday afternoon, we kind of tapered off. I felt pretty good about the town by and large, that we were in pretty good shape, given the amount of rain that we had. Matt worked really hard, a lot of culvert pipes, a lot of ditches, and just doing a great, like, good to prepare, help us on that, but it was, I thought, very good for the rain event that we had. I do have some concerns because what I'm understanding is the Ohio River will crest on Sunday, the thirteenth. It's at forty-two feet right now, and it's expected to rise another four feet or so, and when the rain stopped on, well, we say, when it kind of crested here in our town, late Saturday, the rain had, or the flood bars had moved back into our community just a little bit, we're just monitoring that, so just letting you know, we're doing our best, those sorts of things are clearly over our control, but I think by and large, for the rain event that we had, it's, it's, it's been okay. But, just so you know, we're looking at that really hard. Good news is, the DNR was in town today, as planned, they came here and located holes for the drilling, that will begin a week from today. They spotted those holes today, they're doing locates, starting tomorrow, as far as utilities and what might be there to their drilling process, so that's, that's on target. I had another conversation today that possibly they'll do some additional drilling in the alleys between first and second, and maybe some other areas, so even more good news there, so we're happy that they'll be here next Monday to begin the actual work, it will take two to three weeks for that process of exploratory drilling, in which then they will put together a scope of work to be let out for bidding and start that process in maybe late summer. I guess, hopefully, maybe a little earlier than that, as they tell me. So, that process, again, will take probably nine months or thereabouts to, to complete, so we're just working hard there with the DNR and look forward to what they have to do in our town, just really excited about that, so basically, that's all I need to share.
I do want to say that I've been out several times here, we came down north or right after the down north, and while I did see areas that went up, they also went down very quickly, and it's hard to, you're not going to have no extra water hanging around you, have that sort of stuff, I was actually really happy to see that, so appreciate the work that you and Matt have done over the last bit to get that-
Thank you, thank you, that's, that's-
Under the best control of the P, how's that? When you get eight some inch, eight, eight and a half inches, you're not going to not have any safety water.
And, and that's the, when you mentioned it goes down quickly, and the concern I have is for the outfalls we're counting right now, that's backed up.
Yes.
So if we had rain today, it would no longer go away quickly, and it would spell trouble. So that's why we're just kind of really monitoring that, the good news is, I think the weather is going to be cooperative for the next couple days, so just hoping for more sunshine.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Then, we'll move down to the Court Treasurer.
I don't have a ton to share, but I did this the last meeting, I was at the ILMCT Academy doing training last time, and I learned a ton, and I made a lot of reconnections with other court treasurers in the area and all over the state, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to have, to have done that, glad to be back, glad to have some ideas to implement for the office, and things that we can do to make the town even better. And, so that has been great. Uh, we do have the SBOA here, they have come to do our annual federal audit, so that's going to be a lot of fun, I may be asking department heads to produce documents you guys haven't thought of in a year or so, maybe more. So just be ready to hand those over if you can. And besides that, I think the only other thing I had is I had a letter that should be at the back of your, yep, you, okay, you found it, that I need to sign to say that Brian is no longer the court treasurer and that I am, so that I can-
Possibly, possibly with the four fifty-seven plan.
Yes, with the four fifty-seven plan.
Um, and it is removing Brian as February the eleventh, and then appointing, and, well, standing Brian, her last name was February eleventh, and Kayla was, but then it's the new court treasurer starting February twelfth. Um, and then she's taken the responsibility, that she's responsible for that plan now, and then we're just agreeing to that statement on that. So, we do need to entertain a motion to accept this letter, this letter, I'll read it, please accept the letter of instructions to change authorized individual and plan access information with the Town and Chandler, it's Indiana four fifty-seven plan, and then there's the, the plan numbers next to it. The currently listed individual is Brian, who's no longer employed by the Town and Chandler, associated with this four fifty-seven plan, Brian has resigned from the Town and Chandler, his last day was February eleventh, Kayla Litten was appointed as a new court treasurer starting February twelfth, and then below is the statement, I, uh, Kayla Litten, the new court treasurer, and I am the person responsible for this plan, I'm authorized to sign on the back half of the Town and Chandler, the plan spots are, please remove Brian as plan administrator and add myself, Kayla Litten in this place, in this place, the Town and Council President has also signed this letter as confirmation. So just entertain motions for this letter to be signed, and the set board for the four fifty-sevens.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tanya? Ron?
Yes.
And I know that wording is really repetitive and clunky, but that's what they asked me to put, and that's what we're doing, because this will be my third time trying to submit this letter, so.
That is all I had.
Okay, any new business? Any old business you want, that needs to be discussed tonight? Okay, good, now we're going to move on down to presentation of claims, our presentation of claims today of seven hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain, or, you know, let me ask, is there any questions concerned? Sorry about that, I'm getting ahead of myself. Any questions, concerns, anything, anything that anyone has seen on these? Okay, then at this point in time, I'd like to entertain motions to accept the claims of seven hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents. I'll make that motion.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Thank you.
The minutes will pass, or, I'm sorry, claims will pass as presented, and I've got some time to go on tonight. Okay. And at this point in time, if there's nothing else, I'd like to entertain motions to recess until our next regularly scheduled Town and Chandler meeting. Make that motion.
Sorry.
All those in favor? I, thank you, another nice evening. Sarah, I need to talk to my gentleman, okay? Lost your teacup, right? Okay.